Try to go through them quickly. First, pond vendor qualifications, I think Tyler is going to handle that later.
Yes, sir.
Okay, nope, I'll skip through that one real quick. Second one, again for Tyler, just trying to find out status of the pond bank plans and specs December and hopefully their recession of the water levels so we can get started on the lake bank restoration. We've got a lot of hoops to jump through, plans approved, plans reviewed, and all that stuff to be able to do that on December 1st. I just want to make sure that we're online to do that. Third item, district rules. As a result of the meeting in preparation of the meeting at the candidates last night at Pelican Reserve, I learned a lot in reviewing, and Tony, thanks for sending it to me, of these rules. I am told that our rules are in the office in here in a three-ring binder. I went in and I physically saw the rules. It's gotta be three and a half inches thick. I was appalled at that. I was even more appalled to find out that none of the supervisors had ever come in and asked to look at the rules.
That's not true.
Well, that's what I was told.
You wanted it thicker?
That's... No, sir, I didn't want them thicker. What I really would like to have-
You were misinformed.
I was misinformed, thank you. It makes me feel much better. What I was really getting down to is that I think that those rules should be on our website, and they are not. But what I'm really worried about is what's in them that takes three and a half inches? Maybe, again, I was misled, but I was of the understanding that the reason we can't put them on the website is we have not gotten Tony's approval that they are accurate. That scares me even more. Tony, I know you've told me 100 times, and I will not contest the validity of what you say because you always produce it. You've got a copy of everything in Gateway. Can we just take and pitch those in there and take your set and get them on the website?
I don't know.
Because it's gonna take you a lot of time, and it's gonna cost us a lot of money to have you turn every page to verify that those are indeed the exact rules. I know Chris and I both were looking at the rule for the creation of our, what do you call it, utility rates, connection fees, definition of fees, definition of rules. I have personally four sets, none of which are signed and none of which are dated, and I have no idea which one is correct.
Yeah, what I'll do is, we have, in the past, and then we got tasked with a number of other items, Diane and I were working on that, you know, about the last nine months to a year ago, we got tied up in other matters. And we sat down a couple of times, and then we just need to pick that ball up again and run with it and finish that for the board. Because there are, the official set was supposed to be maintained initially by Severn Trent, then transitioned to DMS, then back to Severn Trent. And there ended up being a couple of sets that happened, and some, there's overlap on some of those. And it's a matter of Diane and I, as well as Stephen, who's the current, is it Sonia?
Marilyn.
Marilyn, at Severn Trent. Do you just sit down and go through that? And it won't take all that long, I don't believe, Ed.
But we, in my opinion, we need rules that the public can get, but more importantly, we need rules that you guys know are accurate and correct.
I agree.
Next item, September meeting minutes, went on the website, and again, we're having problems with that website. There's no meetings minutes for September, none whatsoever. And I guess tonight you're going to get the August 18th minutes. I don't understand what on earth takes so long to get minutes of a meeting. That's, that shouldn't be that away. Next item is the Severn Trent contract Exhibit B. Just a question for all of you. Has anybody read Exhibit B to the contract and all these duties?
Yeah.
Is all this stuff being done? Every item on this being done?
Not exactly.
I'll leave it at that. Exhibit four, Gateway Assessment Plan, has it been updated? 1986, Johnson Engineering created Gateway. Exhibit four to this document, one little simple paragraph, sets the way we do everything. And it was based on a guesstimate of 682 acres in 1986 of how it was going to be. My question is, has this ever been updated?
Are you talking the assessment methodology?
The assessment methodology, yes.
I don't believe it has. I know there was a discussion, again, a few years back about whether to do that or not. I think you raised the issue, as well as, I think, at the time Worthington had, or John Nagy had, on some properties going back about five or six years ago.
I took, and I'm certainly not going to say that it's perfect, but I took basically the new definition of a plenimeter, which, you know, measures area, and I lumped all of the commercial areas together and measured their impervious surface, divided it, then took 53 of our HOAs, took one house out of each one of them, added, averaged their impervious areas, which is exactly what's the methodology here, divided one into the other. Our whole assessment has been based on 5.8. I came almost to 9.
To what?
We need to look at this. We've got a real problem with it. And as much as that's going to hurt some users, on the other side, we have some assessment methodology for like parks, recreation, roads, and stuff like that, where they're assessed on a runoff coefficient that hasn't, means nothing, they should be fair and equitably reduced on those. Same deal. And just let the chips fall where they may. But this thing should be fair, equitable, and proportional. But my question was, has it ever been done? Because Johnson said this needs to be checked. Last item, GIS mapping. Does anybody know where we're at on our GIS mapping? This guy seems to have flew the coop.
I think you and Chris are pretty well, from what I can anticipate, the most knowledgeable people about that.
We really need that mapping to be able to do the stuff we need, have to do.
You might want to ask Chris if he wants to step up and talk about that.
I will do that, but-
It can come up whenever in the meeting. That's all I have.
There's been, there's been a lot of money, time, and effort spent on this mapping. What I want to hear you explain is, what exactly do you or we need that we don't have?
I think the big thing, Bill, is we need the layering of our utilities. Is somebody behind me?
Chris.
Yeah.
He may know more than I do, but I haven't seen anything, that's why I-
Sure. Chris, she may be a utility manager, and I've gone over the contracts and the work product and have the software for viewing. Basically, the, what we have now is a base map and a lot of drainage information, but as far as water, wastewater reclaimed lines and irrigation lines, it's non-existent.
It is what?
It's non-existent.
Oh, it's non-existent.
And we're making some headway, but it's really the drainage in the ponds, and they're starting to work on a project for Pelican Preserve has taken the precedence over the utilities.
The main reason I'm bringing this up is that in order to be able to do, and what you've charged us on the Water Advisory Committee to do, is the start of this capital reserve study for the utilities. If you don't have that, you can't even start it. And our only other choice is to go to the hot box, which by now, if I'd have gone to the hot box six months ago, it'd have been done, is to sit down and recreate every addition that comes into the community, which then ties back to a second reason, and a reason I ask, and it's nothing against Steve, because I know he does his job, but the issue of, when we bring these communities in, is my understanding, and I may be wrong on this, that as we have brought in communities and Gateway is built, every time there is a community brought in, we go through a procedure that there is an engineering report that itemizes all of the materials or all of the facilities that are being brought in, pipe, manholes, forest main, pump stations, all of that, and there's an engineer's estimate with that. That then is attached to, as I understand it, a spreadsheet, a document, that started from scratch and build Gateway all the way up to what we've got, which would be very beneficial to have, because it would then give you the date these things were installed, rather than going back and looking at plans which could have been done three years before it was actually constructed. We know that that date is the date that it was certified by our engineer as being completed. That spreadsheet would go a long way to eliminating, not totally, but eliminating that GIS to where we could start adding up all of these capital facilities for which we need a capital reserve. And my question is, where's that report?
Yeah, well, that's what I was gonna ask. Is that in the infamous files? Anything of that in the infamous files upstairs?
Gary, I've never seen it. We just had, you guys just approved a week or two ago, Timber Woods, and they brought in-
Preserve.
Right next door.
Timber Ridge.
I'm sorry. Timber Ridge Preserve. Brought in the assets that were being taken over by the CDD, water sewer, irrigation, all that. To me, that then goes to a spreadsheet or some document that we simply add that community in, and now instead of 356,000 feet of eight-inch pipe, we have 356,200 feet, whatever the number is. Where is that spreadsheet? How do we know what we own?
Stephen, can you get it?
We do, from a financial perspective. Now, the details that Ed's talking about would go beyond what would be required from financials. I mean, we would record fixed assets for any conveyances or any capital purchases or anything like that, but what I think Ed's talking about really goes more towards something that's more dynamic with engineering specs and-
I'll have to look at the agreement, but-
Can you turn around and look behind you and ask that handsome young man?
There's two of them back there.
I'll count the handsome one.
Hey, good afternoon. Tyler Wainwright with Tetra Tech. With every turnover of every conveyance we get, the developers submit to us a bill of sale for all of the assets that they are conveying. That bill of sale is then handed over to Gateway. That's as far as, as we go with it.
I think also the record drawings are as built are part of what you review also?
Yes, sir. We also get a set of record drawings. We also get a set of electronic CAD files for those record drawings. And I think I've got a copy of every single one that has been conveyed since we've been the district engineer. Prior to that, I don't think we are in possession of any, but I'm sure Gateway is somewhere.
So maybe Bill needs to decide who's responsible.
Well, we need to do that, and I'm not, I don't want to belittle anything Ed says, but he's, in referring that we've got a, well, a lot of work, time, and effort ahead of us if we're gonna accept all of his things that he thinks that we're deficient on.
Bill, I posit it's in the contract with Severn Trent. I tried to pump through it and find it, I should have had it highlighted, but I was positive. What brought it up to me is when this one came in, I asked April, you know, where is this document, because this could save the time of having to do that GIS. And she says, there isn't one. She's not knowledgeable of one. Though, gave me the impression that it was supposed to be done. If it's not, it's certainly something that needs to be added, but I would think, I don't know how you would recreate it right now. The only one that I would be, have any trust in having that documentation, because he's got longevity, is Tony. Yet he would have every one of those going back to the beginning, because that's essentially what you're doing. And it's, it's a problem.
I have boxes of stuff. I'm not sure if I have all those, though.
I would have hoped we'd had it. If we don't have that, that was certainly made the calculation and preparing the spreadsheet of when this stuff was installed, what's its age, doing the calculations, much easier. If we don't, the only thing we can go back to is the plans.
Well, I may, in talking, forgive me, in talking to Chris, just as an offhanded thing, and I'm coming back abstractly, but Chris had a great idea regarding college, I'm gonna use the term interns.
Great idea.
Okay? Chris, I don't want to steal, that's not my intent. What I'm trying to do is get you up to the microphone. Will you get up to the microphone? Maybe you could create this thing, working together with Bill and with Ed, and maybe you could create a procedure that got, and Tony, and get this done.
Sure, there's two pieces, there's two pieces to it. There's the financial side, which is the value of those assets we take over, and what you're really looking at is a peer asset management system, where it's size of pipe, footage of pipe, where the pipe's located, date when it was installed, and we've approached the university about working with their engineering school to bring some folks over, get them involved to design a program, and so we get them involved in the front end, put them to work doing that, and possibly even putting a stipend together to get a couple of them over this summer to go through it from time to certain.
If I can ask a question, do you have, in your reports and our analysis, an indication of where the gaps are, where you do not know where we have facilities? But we have examples. The original utilities were constructed back in 86, 87, 88, 89, under a number of contracts. There was like an A contract, a B contract, and a C contract. I can't recall which one was roads, one was for lakes, and one was for utilities. And I think there's a number of plans for those different projects should be in the district file someplace.
The plans are there, but they are not quantified, that's the problem. That's why I say you have to go up there and quantify them, whereas if you had this list, you could do it.
Could these students be involved also with the peers' archives, we shall call them, and look through those things and start organizing that as part of this whole thing?
Also entering the infrastructure information to our base map, actually putting the lines in and putting the notations on.
One last thing that I'll interrupt is the discussion that Bill's made three times as far as the monies expended. Of the monies that we budgeted, I may be wrong, but I'm looking at Chris on this, what's the total monies that we had budgeted, and what's the total amount of monies that we've spent?
Last time I looked at it, there was about a little north of $90,000 in purchase orders that had been authorized, and we had been billed about $34,000, so about a third of that.
Okay, so though we've approved, we've only actually utilized. So I think part of that may be to communicate with David and see just if he needs to get somebody else to help him. Maybe he can be part of this program.
Thank you.
That's everything I have.
Ed, I tried to write down all of the things where you're alleging were deficient, but I'm sure I missed some. Can you?
I'll get something to you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Manager, is that it for?
Yes, that's it.
Thank you very much.
P-PAC.
Committee Report, P-PAC. Anyone here to talk us through that or anything? All right, it's in our agenda, and are there any questions or statements anybody would like?
I'm from the P-PAC. We have nothing to add until you get to the SSWG report.
To the podium, please.
You don't have a booming voice.
I'm the representative from P-PAC. My name is Jan Beers, and we have nothing to report at this time. If you would wait on the SSWG report until we have our meeting, we'll get you those results and recommendations as soon as possible.
Thank you. Hold on just one second. Questions for general?
I don't care.
Thank you very much. Next, to the consent agenda, items A, B, C, and D.
I have nothing to pull.
We have the approval of the August 18th minutes of ponds and conservation areas inspection operations report and financial report. Mr. Newbell.
Hi. I have, in the minutes of August 18th, there's a number of things that are talked about of things to be done, and I wanted to go through, I just wanted to touch on each of them, and that's what the current status is. How do you want to do it?
Well, this, are you-
I'm not objecting to what's on the minutes, I'm trying to clarify.
We'll take, and we'll take it later on in the meeting.
Okay. So we'll come back to them?
You will.
Okay.
I have nothing to pull.
I have nothing.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda items for A through for D.
Thank you. Have a motion, ma'am, sir.
Okay, I get to ask the questions later? Okay.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion's approved, and second has been made. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. 4-0, motion is carried. My goodness, we're on the staff reports already. District Council, Mr. Perez.
Neil Montgomery and I were playing a little telephone tag and planning a meeting with her and possible staff to go over the Area 9 issue and go with the tract out and try to resolve those and wrap those up, and come back to the board, hopefully on the 20th. That's the most efficient of that. And on Fairway Lakes, I had some initial research of the county records, but not finalized my research of the county records as to what the streetlight requirements are, so hopefully we'll get that done shortly and get that notice out to them.
Okay, is that all for, oh, I'm sorry, please go ahead.
I had one question for him, and that was the easement for us to get to Area 9.
That'll be part of our discussion.
Okay, all right, just-
Oh, yeah, that's part of the discussion.
Okay.
Is that it?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. District Engineer, Tyler.
All right, good afternoon, one more time. Still Tyler Wainwright with Tetra Tech. I have one item on the agenda for you guys today. It is a memorandum regarding the parcel to the east of us. It's being called Timber Creek right now. So there is a graphic in there that shows the area we're talking about. It's bounded between State Route 82 on the north and Daniels on the south side. It's that kind of triangular parcel there. I think one time it was going to be called The Fountains, I believe, and now it's moving forward as Timber Creek. Lennar is gonna be developing it. So we've been working with the developer and their engineer, Morris Pugh, to discuss stormwater conveyance. That parcel historically drains through Gateway. The original conceptual permits for Gateway, talk about that and how the conveyance is supposed to go. We're working with them basically to figure out the specifics about it. So we just wanted to give everybody a heads up that that is going to be happening and that we'll be working with them to ensure that no adverse impacts occur.
Well, that was a whale of a heads up, I'll say that for you. Any members have questions, I hope? Mr. Newbell, or?
So where is, where is the hypothetical that it would connect from The Fountains, AKA Timber Creek?
Southwest corner. They, so the parcel to the east of Daniels Preserve, that one is actually also going to be developed pretty soon, but it's, it's around that general area right there. There's like an FPNL little substation there, it's sort of near that.
Didn't we have with Daniels Preserve, don't we already have easement issues and access issues to Worthington property?
Not only that, we've got issues with keeping the brush down, everything cut back.
Exactly. And, but then that reference in our report that we can't even get in there to do it ourselves because of the fact of we'd be trespassing, et cetera. So we've got, do we have a conveyance of, in fact, the permit by South Florida Water Management? But then again, we're like this, and we can't actually manage what we're supposed to manage.
Okay, so you're talking about the Daniels Preserve, Worthington Commerce area.
Correct.
That has not been conveyed yet to the district. We're actually working right now with Worthington. They're looking to complete that conveyance, but that has not happened yet.
Right, that's correct. We met, Tyler and I met with them three weeks ago or so?
Roughly, yeah.
About three weeks ago. People were in the issues.
It's been going on for like three years?
I think they're in a position now where they want to, they're incentivized to finalize it.
Yeah, they, they recently completed their fifth year monitoring, which was required by South Florida, so they're in a good position right now where all the wetlands are compliant, and they're looking to complete the conveyance to Gateway. There's a couple of items that are still outstanding that we're working with them to complete, and once those items are complete, we would come back before the board to complete that conveyance, but we're not at that stage yet.
And I'm not sure what the nature of the note is about difficulty in accessing it. That's on page 20 of the agenda. I saw that and made a note myself-
Correct.
-to do a little reading, because I, I'll get with Molly and try to understand what that means or how.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't know that one either.
In Daniels Preserve?
I don't know anything about that one either, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's, it's right there in that, their report. And there are lakes in Daniels Preserve? Yes or no?
And Daniels Preserve? Yes, sir, there's-
Thank you. So then my question is, how do we know that the lake bank construction was done via our permit criteria manual?
Um-
And we're gonna accept something that becomes an albatross?
I don't actually know the dates of the permit criteria manual to tell you if it would have been active at that time or not, but as far as the lakes being constructed in accordance with the South Florida ERP and the Lee County DO, that is one of the items that is holding up, I guess, the completion of all that, so we're working with them to ensure that all of it is correct.
But we created the permit criteria manual for Gateway because Gateway is gonna be the one that's gonna have to take the brunt of anything that we accept, and we haven't had a great relationship with the folks associated with Daniels Preserve ever.
And there were some other issues that we talked about at the meeting, based upon some of the past issues. And one thing, from a timing perspective, the recent revisions to permit criteria manual probably don't apply because of the date the district signed off on, and those improvements were prior to the smarter revisions, I'll call it.
You won't fight with me, Antonio? Okay.
No, there are some issues to fight on.
Thank you.
But maybe not that. But there are other issues because of the deep lake erosion issue in the past and some other, other activities that we had to engage in because of Lee County violation notices in the past, items like that. Those are not forgotten.
Yep.
We've raised that with, we've raised that issue about the prior-
Tony's got it.
Well, we're working on it, so.
Well, Tony's working.
Tyler, fall into it.
Gary, are you finished? For now?
With this, yeah.
You have a question?
Tyler, would you turn around to the map behind you and run your fingers around the area that's going to be the Timber Creek?
It's a little bit off the map, but it's this one. This big area right here. There's like a little better here, but it's basically, this parcel is directly east of Gateway. I think 650 acres, roughly.
Yeah, but I, please, can you just outline, give me the diameter of it there? I can't tell which-
This is State Route 82 right here.
Right.
This is Daniels down here.
Right.
It's everything between those two roads.
Oh, my gosh.
Here you go.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I saw it, I just wanted it for the-
Oh, for the people.
And the connection point, or the proposed connection point at this point is somewhere in this general area out here.
Never all of the-
Okay, we've got it up on the screen now for everybody in the audience to see. One, one final thing on this. I would like for you to put to rest a rumor that I heard that this area will be added to the Gateway Services CDD.
I can put that to rest. This area will definitively not be a part of the Gateway CDD.
Any other questions for Tyler on this item?
Utilities?
Is it going to be a pipe connection or an open channel connection?
To be determined.
They never allow open channel.
No. Did you say, are you finished, or did you have something to add?
Anything we should know about utilities, Tyler?
Uh, no, sir, they'll be, they'll be fed by Lee County Utilities. They're unincorporated Lee County. Their wastewater will go to the Gateway plan, obviously. They'll get potable water the same way Gateway does from Lee County.
And they'll be taken for the burden irrigation?
No, sir, they will not.
Well, that may be part of the discussion, because in the past, there were some discussions with Lee County, when the developer indicated they were going to make an upgrade to the capital facilities and wanted some, something in return, but those plans may have changed in intervening years, so.
As far as my opinion sits before you today, they will not be getting irrigation from that plan.
Okay. You dropped a memo with us at the beginning of the meeting. Do you want to quickly review that, please?
Yes, sir, so-
And Mr. Chair, if I may, after Tyler does that, if the board's gonna take action, you need to open it up for anybody who wants to sign up and talk on it.
I thoroughly understand.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Thank you for your time.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, so there's actually two memos there. Apologize for this not being on the agenda, but by the time we received bids and went through all of these, it was past the agenda date. So what the two memos are, are the recommendations, recommendations for the prequalifications of vendors for both the lake maintenance and conservation area maintenance in Gateway. There was on the lakes, a total of four packages that were received. We're recommending that three of the four be deemed qualified to proceed to step two, which is the bid submission. So we can, should I read out the names, or?
I think so, because the public does not have a copy of the memorandum.
Okay. The, the three vendors that we're recommending to be qualified are Lake Masters, Aquagenics, and Lakes and Wetlands. Lakes and Wetlands.
Excuse me just a second. Is there anybody in the audience who wants to make a statement or ask questions about the maintenance of surface water management, please?
Ed Tingle, Chairman of the Ponds Committee, I totally endorse what they've done.
Ed Tinkelman, Chairman of the Ponds Committee, I totally endorse what they've done.
That's the shortest one. Mr., Mr. Attorney, are we going to, are we expected to pass a resolution accepting the three tonight?
If the board wishes to, the board could take action unless the board wishes to defer it to the next meeting.
I'd like to have a motion to approve the recommendation of our engineer and the former, excuse me, and the chairman of the Lakes Committee. May I have a motion to approve this?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any further questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote for zero. Motion is carried. Would you please proceed then to the conservation area, Chairman?
Yes, sir. So, the packages were received on the same day. We received a total of seven packages for the conservation area maintenance. We are recommending that four of those seven be deemed qualified, and those four are Earth Balance, Aquagenics, Met Tower Environmental, and Lakes and Wetlands.
Mr. Tinkelman, do you have anything to say about that?
I don't have knowledge of that. It's beyond my pay grade.
Anybody, anybody in the audience like to come forward and make a statement or ask questions about the recommendation of our engineer on the maintenance of conservation area hearing?
Yeah, absolutely. It's, the four we're recommending be qualified are Earth Balance, Aquagenics, Met Tower Environmental, M-E-T-T-A-U-E-R Environmental, and Lakes and Wetlands.
Are, is there a motion by the board to approve this recommendation of our engineer?
So moved.
Have a motion, may I have a second?
Second.
May I have a second? Any further questions or conversation about this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote for zero. Motion is carried. Thank you. You have anything else for us?
Just a couple of informational updates on where we're at with the lake bank repair project. On the next agenda, we will have a recommendation to deem qualified the vendors for that project. So, there'll be a memo...
Say the word again, to what, to what?
Similarly to like the memo we had tonight about who we recommend to be qualified to bid on those items. There'll be a memo on the next agenda about who we recommend to be qualified for the lake bank repair project. So, you'll be seeing that memo on the next agenda. We're moving forward with plans and specs. We've got surveyors out there collecting survey data right now on the lakes, and we should have a set of plans done shortly after they're complete with surveys, so.
This is for the 13 lakes in the first go around, is that so?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Tinkelman, do you have anything to add to that? Any questions of the engineer?
About all of our easements and all of the debris and the brush and the trees and the, and do we or don't we replace the sod and yada, yada, yada?
Well, as far as the easements go, one of the items that we added to the scope of the surveyor is to survey all of the drainage easements associated with the lakes that we will be working on. So, we anticipate bringing to the board exhibit or multiple exhibits that show all of those, so you can see what we're dealing with and how we want to tackle those.
And then how will we log them into records for the future?
We'll hand over signed and sealed surveys, and what Gateway chooses to do after that is...
There's the problem.
But you'll, are you, you'll, are you going to make a recommendation after the surveyors are finished? Is that what I understand?
As far as what to do with those easements?
Yes.
We can. Yes, sir?
Go ahead.
Yeah. So, we need to establish some kind of format so that we're gathering all this data. Like, this is the way I'm seeing it. We're gathering all this data. We've already heard that we seem to lose data, and this is stuff that's important for the future.
That's an allegation that hasn't been proved.
Well, it isn't. I don't think it's alleged. I think it's pretty well etched in stone. Having said that, I think we have a monument on the corner of Daniels Parkway. So, why don't we establish what we want to do? I don't think that that takes...
My understanding was that the management was going to bring us a recommendation on that.
Okay, Stephen, what is it?
If I could jump in for Stephen and make a quick recommendation for you.
By all means.
So, talking about this GIS system, one of the ways you can utilize it, and one of the ways Gateway is utilizing it right now, is you can store a lot of database-style things in there. Like, right now, you have stored all of the Platts for all of the communities. One thing you can do is when we get those surveys for all of those drainage easements, likewise, you can store all of those in your GIS system. And you can go to that drainage easement and click on it, and boom, a little picture of that survey will pop up, and someone can look at it and say, "Oh, okay, there's, you know, a rock wall or whatever in the easement." So, that would be my recommendation to you as to where to log all those things.
That sounds eloquent, and therefore, my next part of my question is, keep feeding you, that's great. Will you then provide the information to David directly so therefore Bill can assign somebody to double-check, like Ed, with David to make sure that it in fact has gotten to the point that it best accommodates you? Does that sound reasonable?
Yes, sir.
I'm glad you said yes. I haven't, I haven't agreed to anything. Sounds good on his part, but we'll see, we'll see, we'll see what it's like when it comes.
Well, the key is, you, you mentioned David, you mentioned the GIS. It's, it's been mentioned back and forth, and we, if you really look up the meeting records, it's something that keeps getting brought up. So, if it's the ideal way to record things and to actually have true as-bills as compared to, as Ed said yesterday at the meeting, but he said it wrong, it's as discovered, we should move to the next horizon. So, here we got, we have, and what happens is, is that people say, but, and if you look at also what we've got in our meeting book, there's continuous requests for, quote, "We need to have the board to have a policy." Well, what I'm trying to do is get you to make one of the simplest policies that we can tonight.
Oh, you're looking, you're looking for the board to adopt a policy tonight?
Yeah. Oh, my God, rocket. Yes, I think so. I think that this is simple enough that we can go, "Hey, this is what we want to do."
Yeah. What you think is simple, I respectfully disagree. I, I think that simplicity has gotten us into trouble many times before, and I, I want to see a recommendation from our engineers and management before we try and adopt a policy and then change it 15 times.
I had a retort, but I'll hold it back.
Go ahead.
Ed, whether you have it or not, I didn't have it in an agenda.
Oh, yeah. Anything else, Tyler?
No, sir. That's it for me.
Anything else from the board? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
District manager, is someone forward, going to do anything about the item, staff report on district manager?
At this time, I don't have anything additional.
Board members have anything they want to...
Yeah, we're supposed to go back over stuff, so whenever you're ready, let's go back over stuff.
I have one thing after, because...
Good.
Go ahead and let...
I thought we were going to do that on supervisor's comments.
Oh, I thought this was...
We're not there yet?
No, we're not quite there yet. Utility managers' report. Chris, did you have, sir, just a couple items. The TECO projects moving forward. Actually, met briefly today with the regional supervisor. It's been delayed about a week, and that's really been all on their end, trying to get complete construction plans from them and make final arrangements and some things that we had asked them for that they were just remiss in providing. But they did drop them off yesterday. And we do have construction supervision, GPR and everything ready to go, and order repair clamps in case we have any problems in piping. And one last step I'm taking is videotaping right away prior to construction, so when it comes to restoration, that if there's any issues, we can show them the video and say, "You need to restore it to original condition." So, we don't get any of that. It didn't look like this when we started. We're moving forward with our wastewater pump station telemetry control. BCI will be out in the next week sometime. They were delayed a week to start installing that system into the pump stations, the wastewater pump stations, and also syncing two of our cell phones to those alarms in the systems. The water meter project is, is moving along. Right now, we have 23 of the larger meters that have been installed, and I'll have to, to take my hats off to them because all of them have been a tremendous amount of work and digging and boxes. And I literally watched one of their crew of two work on one of those large irrigation meters for six hours. It took them to dig it out and replumb and replace the meter, so they've got their hands full. This is the turnkey project that we agreed on, right?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And we're working with them and following up in the field, and if they need any assistance doing some locating, then as soon as they're finished with the meter, they turn it into a sheet, and we're activating it in the system. Still been working with the property owners on 104. We haven't been making, be able to made any progress on that because the water levels, instead of going down where we can get in there and work, have actually been going up or staying the same. But we're going to try to get out there in the middle of this month figuring the water levels will have dropped, but that will determine when we get started on the construction.
How much do they have to drop before you can start?
About three feet.
Whoa.
Yeah, they're, they're high. The ponds are high, and it's, we can't even work in the area that we want to work in is underwater at this time. Lane finished the irrigation evaluation on three of the four wells. The fourth one sits behind the soccer fields, and it's just a little too swampy to bring the well rig back there. But they'll have the engineering data and chemistry for us, the pump test data, and what we'll do is bring that to you and just show you a quick comparison of how those wells are performing compared to when they were installed in 1986, and make any recommendations if we need to. But the preliminary pump test is the productivity on the wells is about the same as it was when they were put in, which is a good sign. But I would say October 22nd or the first meeting in November, we'll bring that report to you. And our Thompson pump, portable pump, thought we'd get it in late September. They said four to six weeks. We should have it in the next week to 10 days, and I told them to hurry up because it's hurricane season. And one thing I wanted to mention on the TECO line, too, is this afternoon, I went out for an hour and a half workshop they had at the Holiday Inn that was put on by TECO and Peoples Gas. And this morning, they had the, the same session, and we sent one of our staff members over there, and it was basically safety, emergency response. And there's some significant training that's involved with those pipelines. Even when you put them in a community, we picked up some good information. We'll be doing some training. But September 15th, they actually had a breach in Benita Springs, and they were about 45 minutes from evacuating 1,100 homes.
Oh, wow.
And they also had a, an issue where they had some people putting in signs along 31 up by Babson, and they weren't sure if the folks actually had damaged the line or not, so they had to reduce the pressure in the line, which those big lines, they're running about 3,100 pounds of square inch pressure. They had to back the pressure off so they could go in and check it, and that's the line that feeds the Florida Power and Light Plant, and they weren't too happy about that. So, it's, it's nice for the pool, and it's nice for the brewery, but it, it will cause some training to be done and us to be, you know, ready to respond if an incident ever were to happen. And you just have to keep a close eye on it. You know, if people are out there digging or, you know, digging without calling 811.
That it for now?
Yes, sir. We also found out if you spot somebody digging without a dig ticket, and you go up and ask them for it, they, they'll be fined $500, and the people that reports it gets to keep $400 of the $500.
Wow.
So, that's something to keep.
That could create a business.
Yeah. So, that's something to keep in mind.
What, what is the depth of those gas lines below the surface?
Well, in, in our area, they're basically planning on going under everything we have. Of course, they have to come back up to the surface for their potholes, but in a lot of cases, they'll be six and seven feet deep. But typically, I haven't seen any of them under four to five. But even in that, under 12,000 feet, they're going to be crossing 71 Gateway pipelines of various sizes, reclaimed water, storm pipe, at all different elevations, so.
What requirements do they have per linear foot or some such animal to have emergency shut-off valves?
They have shut-off valves, and it's also on a SCADA system with those valves that if they have a leak or a breach somewhere, there's automatic shut-offs on them.
And how frequently is that tested or checked?
That I don't know.
Can we make, can we make a requirement for that? Do we, can we, Tony, or not?
I don't believe so. It's regulated probably by the state, Public Service Commission, indoor or some other state regulatory agency, I don't think.
But it, it's almost amazing because even on the larger pipelines, not, not only do they walk them and have motorized vehicles and sensors going over them, but they also fly them with fixed-wing aircraft at low altitude because they look for discoloration in the grass, dry or wet areas, things like that that's indicative of a breach.
Cool.
Anything else?
Is that it?
Yes, sir.
Any questions? Thank you very much. Supervisor's comments. Let's start with Mr. Newbauer. He previously told us that he had a few things for us.
Okay.
Would you give us a page, a number, please?
Yeah, let's start with the Ops Manager Report. Let's start page 27. Stephen, you with me?
I'm with you.
All right, sir, thank you. Under Parks and Rec, please. Item six. Last sentence. Permanent park rule sign is being developed. What's the sta, well, she's not here. What's the status, and what does it look like, and what are, back to the old thing, what are our rules?
Well, I bet you we don't have a rule on that.
Want to make a motion? So, you know, that, that's again, one of these things that I, in my thing, keep seeing the 12th of never that keeps playing as a 45 RPM. So, we haven't got anything done with that. Lightning str, number eight. Lightning strike at Dog Park. Here we go again.
Isn't this, isn't this the second one we've had?
Thank you very much. You're, you're watching, which I am too, and I'm saying to myself, "How risky is this?" And if you drive down the driveway towards the Dog Park, you'll note that there are some very tall concrete poles that we have. Might it not be a good idea to put a lightning rod on one of those tall poles?
Are those our poles? I thought those were county poles.
Therefore, an interlocal agreement. That, you know, the county is somewhat recent, but I think that we can't keep, people being out there, first of all, are, certainly, secondly, are equipment, and thirdly, we don't want, bless you, we don't want people trapped inside the park because we know that when the power fails, the plank thing goes to lock mode, and we've got somebody that could be trapped in there. I think we ought to do something about that. Stephen, would you make a note of that, please?
Yes, I have, yes.
Okay, next page. Moving right along. 28. Number 10 Worthington turnover. Staff working on final details, need to accept the, so have we heard everything about the Worthington turnover so far this afternoon?
I believe so. Tyler, anything else? I mean, again, we had that meeting with, Tyler and I had the meeting with the Worthington folks, and we gave them a list of what we need from them, and...
Be careful, Tyler's smirking now.
The, the only other item was, there, we're working to set up a meeting with the folks from Worthington and the engineer from the time, which was CES, us and South Florida all to get together and go over the applications. Because it's, it's not really a clean item because there was multiple applications that overlapped the same area. So, we're trying to determine what exactly covers what in each application, what area, and what's being conveyed. So, the only other item I have to add is that we're working with South Florida to set up a meeting and go over all of that, so.
And when will that be?
We tried to get it this week, but the person was out of town at the district, so we're shooting for next week.
Okay. So, at the next board meeting, we should expect a detailed report from you, isn't that correct?
Might just, might just be an update.
It's probably going to be a verbal update, yes, sir.
More than a detailed update.
A detailed verbal update, yes, sir.
Okay. This is going to be the 12th of never again. Last but not least, number 19, the pool. Seems like we're working on a supplier for the door for the shower. I think privacy is of the utmost importance. Can we find something other than Starboard to create a door for a shower? Can great engineering minds share why we gotta have Starboard? Why we can't have Cedar or...
Boys and girls. Isn't Starboard, it's an engineered product, is it not?
Sure. But then there's engineered product, like, come on. I mean, we can create something out of simple composite decking. This isn't rocket science, kids.
Would you make a note of that, Stephen?
Yeah, I'll make sure these four items are addressed.
Thank you, thank you. Okay. Now, can we go to page, item 4B, page 19?
Back to 19?
Please. Are we ready? Under Pond 56. Dog waste signs of wildlife being fed. Dog waste signs of wildlife being fed. Staff to send educational letter. Here I go again. So when was the letter sent? And has anyone thought of, especially with feeding wildlife, since we've got this other thing that's in here? That'll bring up where it talks about, we're thinking of putting up signs for alligators and et cetera. Hasn't anybody thought to knock on some doors or do something? This gets into communication again. It's been something that's been a pet thing of mine for eight years. Speaking of 58, somebody else has got dog waste, et cetera, and we've got the same thing. One event, rest of our staff to send either an educational letter or monitor. What is monitoring going to do? Look to see if it gets bigger. 58 also talks about limbs covering. Staff to, to determine if the maintenance tech should pick up after each storm event. Or the landscape contractor needs to be instructed. Also an educational letter to be sent. Either pick up the stuff or decide who. 58 again. Here we go with this thing that I was mentioning. Operations wants us. A policy should be developed and adopted so staff has direction regarding the easement encroachment. So at 12, 662, if you're watching, Ivory Stone, that'd be Ivory Stone Loop, right?
It's 12, 668.
No, it says 12, 662, sir.
Oh, I was on the, I'm sorry.
The other, the other eight, that's all right. Plus four is, plus four is 12, and that's where the two comes in. Standalone plants patio built within our easement. So this brings up again, this thing that I was asking Tyler about, which again gets people building into the easement, which again, until the board establishes a policy, the staff is virtually hands tied. We need to give them what they need to do so that they can feel confident that, first of all, that they have proper instructions and secondly, that we have their back.
Now, I would suggest when the future reports reference any encroachments into the easements, it does not state that take back the easements. It's to pursue removal of encroachments or to address encroachments because taking back makes it sound like they have, they have something. And we are the, you know, the dominant estate by virtue of our easement. I would just suggest that, Stephen.
Okay. Yep. And it says the same thing. Now I know what Bill's talking about. He's talking about the next one down below, which is again, says the same thing. Policy developed and adopted so staff has appropriate direction. If you look and go farther down to item number 81, 12, 1, 12, 906 passed your way. Policy needs to be developed and adopted yet so staff has proper direction. You need to do something. That's a board type thing. Under item 81, adjacent property surrounding the pond, and this is what I referenced earlier in the meeting, is owned by Worthington Commerce Park. There was a discussion if there was anywhere the vendor could access the pond so that they could treat the cantae. We need to help them out. And number 95 on page 21. Trash. Staff to pick up or send an educational letter to the nearby commercial property. I don't think we should have to take care of commercial property. Okay? You agree?
I agree.
And I don't think we need to pay for the electricity for commercial property either. But having said that, in several meetings before, I think that it's quite obvious we ought to send a letter to this commercial entity and tell them, hey, look, it's, we're not going to do that. Questions, comments, criticisms, offhand remarks?
I agree on the letter, Stephen.
Okay. Speak into the mic.
Hello?
Hello?
I think you got a good point. Speak up.
So I agree that we should send a letter out, but then we need to put something together as to what we're going to do in terms of assessments if they continue to not do what they need to do.
Okay. And then you're falling into my hand because then, do we have a rule that staff can go to? And can say, I'm following the board's direction. It's right here. And we should.
It is, it is in the book.
Don't, don't listen, don't listen to him.
And we're going to make the book thicker just for you.
Yeah. And one, one way to avoid a four inch book as opposed to three inch book is you can have it as a, again, as a board policy or board protocol, you know, staff protocol. As to how to address these things to avoid having to go through the whole room making process. But have something in writing is good. I agree.
I think even better is all new board members shall be required to read it.
And memorize it.
And memorize it and there shall, and there shall be a test. Your, your own worst enemy.
Touche.
Touche. All right. And I'm on page 11. Pond restoration. Mr. Tyler Weinright indicated that the SRF is not formally approved yet, yada, yada, yada. So have we had every part of the update that we should, Tyler, for pond restoration? Do you think? You know where I'm at? Line 46.
Uh, yes, sir. I'm pretty sure we came back at a meeting after this one. I think it was the first one in September. And we discussed that the SRF loan was approved for design bidding. And at the November meeting, they will reconvene and approve, I don't know if appropriation is the right word, but approve us for construction dollars. So I think there's a draft loan package that we need to get in front of Gateway and the management company. Should start going through everything.
Will that be before next meeting or not?
Uh, I believe it'll be before next meeting. We need to get everything from the FDP first.
Come on, come on. If we've got three feet of water to drop down before we do anything, there's no real hurry on this, or am I wrong?
Well, you've got a, the, the loan document does have to be executed by, I think it's the first week in December, I believe. There's a date that it has to be executed by. I'm pretty sure it's the first week in December. So we do need to get that in front of the board, start reviewing and approving so we can move forward with executing that loan. But as far as construction goes, we're not building anything until January, probably.
But to facilitate this other part, which is a critical part, we should move forward in a very direct manner. Okay. So next meeting, right, big guy?
Yes, sir.
I love the smell of success in the morning. Here we go.
Where are you?
I'm at line 50. All right. CDD might want to consider posting alligator and reptile warning signs. Did we or didn't we?
I don't think that we did. I think we talked about it and didn't do anything.
I think the last update we got on that, that they were looking for the proper locations to put them, but I don't think they've been done yet.
So what do you, so I'm coming back at you.
I even forwarded what I thought would be a good alligator sign.
Okay. So may I digress to the legal, legal here?
I think the issue is today, some of these questions, April's not here to address, so.
I think we need to establish policy. I think we need to establish so that she doesn't think that she's always having to come back to us. So why don't we give her some direction and then let her get it done?
I understand what you're saying. But I don't know the, I don't know where they are in the process.
Okay. Well, let's establish the policy and then they can tell us where the process, where they are in the process. But my other question is, is Tony, is there anything legal that we should consider regarding the signs? Whether it's the wording, whether it's the size, whether it's the location, whatever.
I don't have my memo in front of me as to location, but as to sign and type or if you go, I think the FWC website for Wildlife, Fish and Wildlife Conservation, they have recommended signage on there because you may not want to just reference alligators, maybe reference alligators and other critters such as snakes.
Okay.
So I, I think there's a wide range of types of signs. And I think it's always something that's always useful, it's run by the insurance carrier. And I think we had that discussion. I don't know if that needs to be a board level discussion. I think it's more of a management and staff as to what's going to be on there. As to location, I don't know if the board agreed or determined what locations they would be located, what lakes or ponds.
How do you differentiate?
I think for, if you have a pond, lake or an area where they have been, I think if I recall correctly, they're in close proximity or they've been coming up like neighbors' yards or items like that when they're almost nuisance. I, I can't remember exactly the memo, but those are the areas where it should be posted definitely, where they've been sighted or observed or.
In any place that we permit fishing?
I think that'd be.
Say again? Any place we permit fishing?
I think that'd be a good idea.
Okay. So why don't we create at least the idea that staff should be given the direction that maybe by next meeting that they'll come up with. A, they will have discussed with insurance. B, they'll have a sample sign that we could decide on.
And, and C, locations.
Thank you very much.
How many, you know, how many per lake and how many per literal, literal fee?
I don't think you need that many. I think, you know, once again, but as long as, I'll resurrect the memorandum also as to when it's most advisable to have those.
All right. So in two weeks, anybody see any reason why that can't at least be proposed? Okay, good. Can we get that in a minute? Stephen?
Yes, I've got it.
Thank you very much. And let's see if I've got any other. Oh, yes. Number 80. Item 80, or line 80, I'm sorry. Page 12. Bob Geppert suggested holding money back for the lots that have not been developed, whatever the formula is for that, which will be provided by Tetra Tech.
You hear your coin out to toss it?
See out. This guy's a television star. Look at this.
All right. So we're talking about holding money back. I think what Mr. Geppert is referring to is the retainage of the development bond, of the performance bond, construction bond, that WCI puts in place when we give them approval to build things. The permit criteria manual specifies that 10% of that bond gets held for three years as the maintenance slash warranty period.
Okay.
So that's what your PCM says.
Regardless of they build three and then they, they go dormant for three years or?
Uh, not sure I understand your question. What was it?
Well, if we've got a bunch of lots that, that are going to sit there and we're presently in a, for lack of a better term, in a discussive mode with WCI regarding when it was permitted and permit criteria manual and et cetera and.
It's three years from the date of you accept the conveyance. So not all of these places out there in Tractel have bonds in place. Some of them were constructed before Gateway required bonds to them. However, the ones that you do have bonds for, the three years of the date of acceptance is when they sit till.
Construct, there wasn't a pond out there in Cypress Grove, having driven through there, et cetera, starting in 2013. There weren't any ponds out there whatsoever. There wasn't a scoop out of that earth. Which we all discovered when there was the infamous backup of water into Pelican Preserve. So how can they say that that was constructed when it wasn't constructed? And me and Old Baxter, the German Shepherd, walked around and watched every one of them dug.
Are you talking about lakes being constructed before 2013?
Yeah.
Part of Tractel, there were lakes that were constructed in 2006.
Back there?
Yes, sir.
I need Mark White in his helicopter again.
You can, I mean, a good way to do it is go back through Google Earth. You can go back through historic areas. The one, the furthest one to the west on the north side of Cypress Grove, pretty sure it was 2006 or 2007 that one was dug. That's part of Tractel.
I believe so. When we had that discussion about Tractel, I was going through the property prasers areas and going back historically, and I think some of those were 2006 or so.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Help me go back, but not now. Um, line number 95. Gates, Ms. Feinberg inquired about the FPNL gates. Ms. White noted new gates have been installed. And I think the young lady sitting there with her glasses on the bridge of her nose also asked the question at the last meeting. So what's happened?
Well, this was, this was a, a chain used to be across the FPL easement down closer to Dog Creek. I think the gate she was talking about was for Hampton Park. I don't know if those were installed, but I know that there is no chain across the access to the FPL easement.
Correct. Cause I drove by there again.
Exactly. I looked today on my way here.
So it indicates that now Ms. White will follow up with WCI. That's the statement in here.
Yeah. Well, that's for the gates at Hampton Park, I believe.
No, it says the FPNL gates.
I think it's the FPNL gate.
It's right here.
But the gates, the FPL easement at that, the path crosses across Hampton Park.
Hampton Park has put gates up inside Hampton Park. So you can drive in, but you can't get in inside the park. Once you get to the end of that road into Hampton Park. So, but that's FPNL. I don't know why they don't have a gate on.
So it's not been taken care of?
No, it is not.
Therefore, shall we make a? Thanks. I think I've got.
That's marvelous. Thank you for bringing all of those items to our attention between you.
Shows that somebody reads the book, you know.
No, I did.
Careful. The lady with the, she took her glasses off.
Kathleen, did you have something?
I could add to information, what?
If you want to speak to the board, you must come to the podium.
Oh, you're going to?
Yes. Kathleen Fleerty from the landscaping committee. The chain that Margaret's talking about, okay, Gateway is going to be taking care of it because FPL says they don't, they're, they're not going to do it. So April had said at our meeting that she would be taking care of that chain and it will become.
At what meeting?
At our landscaping committee meeting, I think. Okay. And the FPL was supposed to have put up the gates for Hampton Park already. Those are supposed to have been installed.
Yeah.
That's what we were told at landscaping. Okay?
Thank you.
Please allow one more question. Please. You gotta come up there. You can't sit, you can't talk and sit. You have to come up.
Not the sitting or standing, it's walking.
I would like to know the status of the website being repaired so that residents who are not necessarily skilled in searching through everything and every little nook and cranny can find out things when they want to see. For instance, I went today to find the meeting book and found it, said it wasn't available. I looked for the agenda, it wasn't available. So I had to make, start making calls. And by the time I got through, I'd probably spent a half an hour trying to find out where I can find out. I heard two, three weeks ago or maybe a month or so that the website had been quote hacked. I don't know exactly what that means. I just what I read in the paper. But the, at the time, it was said that, well, I don't know, so I believe that April said that she didn't know whether she should proceed or not because it was going to cost money to get it fixed and, 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 and. But it's, to me, it's important if we want to learn what's going on to be able to access the website and get the information.
I couldn't agree more. We'll, we'll, we'll find out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I said that in a non-inflamatory way.
I noticed, I noticed.
I should be hitting that shit going in minutes too.
I just had one thing. Tony, do you have any update for us on the turnover of our roads to Lake?
I'm still working with the survey and the title work to push that forward. It's on my, top of my list.
Are you, I'm glad to hear that.
Yes, sir.
Do you have any kind of date that we can write down?
Not right now. Hopefully have one at the next board meeting.
Thank you very much. Margaret?
I'll let supervisor's comments start at the end and then I'll finish up.
We're all done.
You guys are finished. Okay. All right. You had requested that we have a workshop with Joe De Servo and April and Chris. And we did that the 29th and the 30th. It was a really good workshop. I think that we've come up with a start. What I got is a, an organizational chart that's just the top tier. This is like phase one, that Joe De Servo asked me to show you so that if we get consensus and agreement and, and we vote on this and agree that this is what we'd like for it to do, we can move to phase two, which will be him doing the next step on it. So. So I'm going to pass this out to you, and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to discuss it. But it's basically the top four, one for Tony.
Yeah.
The top four positions in the organization, and so this is... And this is, this is kind of a draft of this, the district, it says district manager, but that's really operations manager, and that would be in-house, we need that position, we were talking about moving it in-house and making them once again a district. And then they would be the conduit to Severn Trent, as the management conduit.
Can you put that on the screen so we all see?
We don't have it.
I've got extras here if you want to see them. And then underneath the, the operations manager, which is a term I'm going to use because that's more familiar to everybody, would be utilities...
Where it says district manager, we can say operations manager, okay?
Right, and underneath that would be someone running, you know, the utilities department, the administration, and then the public works department.
What, what is, what is your desire for today? For us to take this and think about it until the next meeting, or have some conversation about it now? What's going to, what's going to please you as far as your time schedule is concerned?
What I'd like to do, and what Joe Di Servo had requested that I do, is have the board agree and vote that this is okay, that we can accept this as being the top of our organizational chart, so we can move on to putting this in place and creating the, the job functions, and then a range of salary for these positions.
Don't you think it's a little fast to just hand us this and ask us to agree on the top of the organization?
Well, and remember, we just met on the 29th and the 30th. This was, and if you have any questions, Chris, he was in on this, this is, we couldn't get it on the agenda, but Joe Di Servo didn't want to waste another two weeks because it'll take time to actually get all of this in place. And this is phase one, and if, you know, there needs to be an agreement and a consensus of the board that this is, this is how they'd like the top of the organizational structure to be. And I really think this is what we need, I think this is what we've been lacking, and this, I'm, I'm hoping that the other board members agree, because we don't, it's like Gary said, we don't, there's no direction for the employees to understand what all their job functions and duties are. And this is putting that in place, but it's got to start at the top. We can't, can't get any efficiency out of our workforce if we don't have this in place.
Gary, would you start the questions, please? No, you don't want to?
Well, no, I just, did Joe at all, or in, no, make, make this, did the four of you, and the title, by the way, is superfluous. It could be gingerbread.
Right, exactly. I just said operations manager, because we're more used to that term.
You did fine, you did fine, I'm just making a point. Was there any thought that you went through, or discussion that you went through, as to what the qualific, two things, the qualifications of that person should be, and that's really the second question, what the duties of that person or responsibilities of that person should be, and therefore, because of those, what their qualification should be to be able to meet our idea of the efficiency of that position?
And that was, that was the next thing that Joe Di Servo wanted to work on, and he was going to work on that, again, with the four of us, creating job functions, and again, a salary range.
Okay.
But he said he wanted for the board to agree that we should head in this direction, or else there's no point in doing the next phase.
The actual chart itself, regardless of how the boxes are filled in, the chart is correct, and I fully agree with it.
How can you say it is correct when you haven't heard from any of your other board members?
Because she asked for my opinion, and I gave my opinion, and my opinion...
Well, when you say it is correct, that doesn't sound like an opinion.
Excuse me, you interrupt.
You're darn right.
Like my mother, no, it's not your right.
You're darn right.
No, it isn't, it's rude.
Well, it may be rude to you, but you're one of, never mind.
Yes, I am one of them, born and raised, but in any case. Yet, the idea being that someone who works within and has the proper qualifications, whatever they're decided to be, then make sure that the next people down on the next tier, whatever their qualifications are and job descriptions are, whatever is decided to be, then disseminate to the lower tiers, that's simple. That doesn't, that's not a rocket science.
And this was, this was actually what we had charged Joe Di Servo to do, to really come in and tell us what we need. And with input from April and Chris, and then myself, this is what, we all came to the same consensus. We agreed with him that this was what the top of our organizational chart is.
You did fine, and you've got my vote. But it's one of five, but it's as valuable as any of the five.
Pam?
I, I agree, I think that this is a good start. I mean, it's, it's not that different from our other organizational charts, but it has expanded, and I think that this is a good start. It's not, because right now, this is, he's just doing the basic at the top, so we haven't really made any decisions except to get this done, and this needs to...
Well, you, you folks are way ahead of me, and I guess I should apologize. But I want to know if you can tell me your definition of utilities, your definition of public works, and your definition of administration. I've got an idea of what administration is, but I have zero idea of what you are including in utilities. I'm presuming, well, I shouldn't presume, I can have, I have some ideas ahead, but they, they...
Chris, you'd probably be better able to answer his question.
Sir? Question?
He's asking about the two wings of this as utilities and public works, how are those separated out?
The utilities is really water, wastewater, irrigation, and on the public work side, you're looking primarily...
Hold on, just, hold on, just, so this, this is what we call the enterprise fund primarily?
Yes, sir. Just the wastewater and irrigation, okay?
And all the ancillary things, the wells and the pipes and all of the stuff that makes it run, is that so?
Correct, and...
Okay.
And the other wing on the, on the public work side is your stormwater and roads primarily, and... Yep, and, and how you go underneath that next layer hasn't been set in stone yet, and Joe's been working on that.
It's phase two, this is phase one.
So, yeah, he's going to give you...
The job functions.
The job function on the next phase. This is just saying, okay, this is, this part is fine, and then he's going to come in and give you job functions.
Okay, I, when I was writing, I think I missed something under public works. I wrote down parks and rec. Can you, I think you said some other things.
Roads.
What did I say?
Roads and drainage, and drainage meaning the ponds. Yes, sir.
At any rate, those, those job functions haven't been set in stone, so what you're writing down may change, so...
Okay, okay, I'm, I'm okay with that. I'm just, I'm just trying to get in my head the kind of division that you are making, and also try and understand whether you have, in fact, included all of the work that we do on a day-to-day, month-to-month, year-to-year basis.
Yes, sir, we looked, we looked at that, and we, we didn't define each specific task that would be going under public works, you know, because your parks and rec's kind of a soft part, and how, how it goes underneath those. But those three boxes are really reflecting where, following the money. Because you have utilities, you know, which is the enterprise fund, and public works with a $6 million expenditure coming up in the next few years with ponds, and the road turnover, of course, being a big dollar item. So we felt that needed, needed a person on top of those items.
Okay, but until just this minute, you didn't mention the pond, lake, bank work.
Stormwater. When I say public works, roads, stormwater, the stormwater system would be all your canals, piping, and the ponds.
What land? Well, and, and he's writing all this down, but this hasn't been...
We're not to that point.
Margaret's made it very clear, we haven't, that's their next, that's their next thing to do.
Yeah.
So that he's just wanting approval on the chart itself. He has not put the job description in yet.
Okay, I, I got that, but I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to see, basically, how it's, how it's split up, is all.
But what you really need to do is to give them the permission to get going so that they can then bring it back. And I'm sure that when they bring that back, then you'll want to really digest that. My question to Margaret is, is if we, if, and right now, we've had at least three people that have said it. In two weeks, will, is that...
Two weeks, you'll get the next phase. Joe is, Joe will be working on, with approval of this, he'll be working on the job functions and the salary ranges.
I'll make the motion that we move forward.
Yeah, I would suggest before any action is taken by the board...
You have to have the, the audience see if they have something to say.
That's correct, that's correct, as an action item.
To the podium.
We're heading the right direction. First comment is for Tony. I've read before I came over here, because I had some knowledge that this was going to happen. I thought that chapter 190 and district manager was a connotation of 190 that is a firm that we employ. I'd much rather see that person that you're calling district manager be general manager. So as not to be misunderstood with the district management firm.
It doesn't have to be a firm, it's typically how it has been handled.
That's where I was going. Are we taking the position that this is going to eliminate the need for a district manager?
Well, you can't eliminate the district manager, it's required by statute, there shall be a district manager.
Okay, well, then I go back to, I'm going back, what I'm saying...
That's why Severn Trent is over here.
Yeah, but my point was Severn, my, my point is, is that the general manager, I can see Severn Trent or district management reporting to the board as supervisors. Are we saying that the Severn Trent, the management firm, no longer goes to the board? They report to the general manager, no contact whatsoever?
No, we're not saying that.
That's, that's what this shows.
Well, I, I...
I want to make sure we're right in what we're agreeing with, because I think the concept is, is, is good. But the one that I see, the, the wings of this thing look great. I totally agree with that, with what Chris said, utilities and public works, totally agree.
And the Severn Trent that's handwritten in was just that I didn't want for people to think that the district manager was still Severn Trent, and I wanted that Severn Trent to be a separate bubble.
Well, just, just for clarification, if that line is from Severn Trent to the board, and maybe a dashed line from the general manager, whatever we're going to call this person, over to them would be on things like budgetary, financial type of issues, but certainly not day-to-day operation. Not anymore.
That is going to be more decided in the next two weeks. So I think we're, again, we're kind of jumping the...
Okay, and the last, and the last one. The admin side, again, if we're going to take an, have some conversations with Stephen, and I know Severn Trent is willing to do this, and I'm sure other ones are, is having an à la carte listing of things that they can do. In other words, we bring more in. What I'd like to see you all as board members do is take that Exhibit B to Severn Trent's contract, identify the...
You're getting way ahead in it.
No, I'm not.
You are, you're getting way ahead in this.
Yep, let me tell you why, Margaret. It depends on what you're going to qualify. This administration section, if, what I'm envisioning is that we would do, would be able to reduce the amount of money we pay to Severn Trent. And the only person that would be handling that, as I see, it's not going to be your utilities guy and your public works guy. This is going to be the administrative side. The question is, how much admin are you going to put on this person? Are they going to do everything that Severn Trent was going, was doing right now, it's in that $120,000? Are they going to do a portion of it? Because Joe needs to know that, because how are you going to go out for qualifications if you don't know what the services are?
But, okay, so...
That comes with the job functions that he's going to create.
I understand that, Margaret, but you all need to decide what the job functions are that you're going to take away.
We are going to decide that, but that's, that's the next phase.
You're getting ahead, you're getting ahead of this.
Can we thank Mr. Tinkle for his input?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I think...
Just, just as long as this, I agree with the concept going on and having the dialogue on it, but I hope no decision is going to be made on this until after the election.
I think Margaret will agree that, number one, she said it three times, you're going way ahead of this concept, and it's something that needs to be taken a little bit slow to be able to be accepted by a number of different parties. Number two is that Joe Di Servo runs a ship a little bit differently than we have, and that may be a concept also that may be discussed between the four people that are entrusted to do this, and that may be presented to us as well.
I have, I have to, I have to interrupt you for a moment, please.
Sure.
I have asked for any further comments from the audience about this. It's a legal requirement that I have to follow, sir, if you want to trundle up to the microphone again.
Or mosey.
Mosey.
You've been as many miles down the road as I have, you may be have the same problem. I would like to remind the board that in addition to the taking these things piecemeal, at some, at each step, I think that you have to consider what it's costing, because the, it's so easy to say, boy, this would be a great organization. Oh, yeah, we could find these people, and these people can fill these slots, you've still got to pay for it. And it's something that's easy to overlook when you're talking about it, and I would suggest that you don't let that out of your mind. Thank you.
And George, just to let you know, that was one, that's part of the discussions that were taking place with the four of us in the work group, is that that would certainly be part of the consideration that this would be for.
Anyone with a public, excuse me, one second. Did anyone else in the audience wish to make a comment before we proceed on this? I believe I have a motion, do I not?
Yes, the motion is to accept this, and at the same time, to congratulate the four people that did all this work on doing a very fine job.
And I believe I have a second, do I not?
I have a second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, is there, are you, do I need, do I need to wait for you for something?
No.
Oh, I have a question. No, wait a minute. This is getting out of hand. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote.
Thank you very much.
Four, zero.
And I think you will be pleased with the next phase, we'll be working on that next. Joe's just waiting to get feedback from the nine.
So you're going to be meeting again?
I believe so.
Cool.
And he's actually, today I spoke with him, he's actually trying to prep Sebring for the possibility of parking for twins. So he was pretty busy, but we'll be back in touch.
Superb, so the 20th?
Yes, there'll be something on the 20th.
And from Tyler as well. Just remind you. Ladies, ladies and gentlemen, we have, we've finished our agenda, and I'm ready to declare that this, before this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, this is one of the quickest meetings we've ever had, congratulations.